7:30 I'm calling to order the monthly meeting of Marshall Borough Council of August on Monday, August 15, 2016. We'll start with a moment of silent prayer, lullaby, and political defense.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberated, and just as for all.
I'll now ask you borough members for a day roll call.
Mayor Dave Ravel.
Here.
Vic Cicero.
Here.
Frank Kernert.
Present.
Karim Chronicle.
Here.
Danielle Larsson.
Here.
Ted Parker.
Here.
Bill Pepitone.
Here.
Todd Sanford.
Here.
Debbie Smith.
Here.
Councilman Sean Kilkenny.
Here.
Bob Suvi. And Bob Seward.
Just want to work council that speakers in the room are not that great, so speak up. They're on, they've just got our speakers in the room working, so. Well, they do work on the TV, so when you yell, you're hearing everybody's low tears. So what I was thinking is just keep them up a little bit, but speak at louder volume to everyone in here. We then have special presentations, of which I don't believe we had any, and we'll move to hearing of the public, starting with Madeline P. Jones.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I shall speak in the vicinity. First of all, I'd like to thank everyone who had any help, any participation in putting together the National Light Out in Morrisville. Anyone and everyone who volunteered, whatever their position was. I'd also like to thank those councilcoats who came out to support it. And also like to put a thank you for a quick response to, oh, I guess, maintenance department. I had called in regarding some weeds on the bridge, canal bridge across the Marne pharmacy. They were out there, and they seem to have done a good job. I know that they need in the rain, weeds are growing back. There are other areas, other crosswalks, different canal bridges down on Bridge Street, and different intersections, again, that need to be addressed. If you don't have a maintenance crew to go out there with the funding, perhaps, you know, some from the courts, some can do service hours, perhaps from Judge Burns, and perhaps there are other opportunities. But we need to clean up Morrisville. We truly need to clean up Morrisville. Morrisville matters. Morrisville works. It only works as well as each one of us up front. Each one and every resident works to give their own share. Also, I want to thank, and I should have done this earlier, Mr. Kernert, that your council meetings back. You had asked to stop the gossip, if I remember correctly, regarding certain things that were going on in the town. And I think that should be said in an ongoing statement. Gossip kills the person gossiping, let alone the person that's being gossiped about. So it should be brought to the proper person or place to clear up anything. But I truly appreciated that statement. I'm sorry I took so long to say thank you. One, one of the vendors at National Light Out was safe sidewalks. Hopefully, everybody had a chance to find out what safe sidewalks was about. If not, check it out. But Bucks County, especially in our own area and in the borough, our sidewalks are unsafe. I'm not just talking about trees uplifting the concrete. Miracles are literally saddling the sidewalks. They don't want to park in the street, or can't park the street, and perhaps they're horrified already over lawn because everybody's moving healthy states. For whatever reason, they're parking on the sidewalks or half of the sidewalks, both their mirrors or their bumpers are actually overtaking the apron, the five-way apron, or any part of the sidewalk. That's not correct. I'm sure there's an ordinance in the borough about this also. You walk down from the canal bridge that was just cleaned up. You have a row of homes. You have cars basically blocking the sidewalk, and you have weeds and trash bins. Where is the safety in having sidewalks? And also, I truly appreciate, I'm sure others appreciate, the dress code, everybody seems to be professionally dressed in light spy weather. Hopefully, there's... So much for that one. Hopefully, there is a dress code for council and everybody forward of the meeting chairs. That would mean junior councilperson should be professionally dressed, no jeans, no tight clothing, and a complimented dog, not coming in with jeans. So, please, we need to be professionally dressed. Your body posture will improve. Your body language will come over as being professional and a little bit caring. I had one more, but I can't, so I want to say thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Eileen Driscoll.
Hey, I've been out here for a couple months, so air with me on the list. First of all, I'll go with the tonight's agenda. And I see first of all, 10A is to approve the 14th annual Jazz Festival. It's approved by the Marshall Borough. Now, this is the way it's been done since I'm team years. What does this benefit? Does this not benefit the Sherlock?
Benefits the residents.
No, does it benefit the Sherlock Scholarship Foundation?
I believe so.
Is that what it was done before? This isn't co-sponsored with the?
I believe there's a table there for the scholarship.
Co-sponsored for who? With who?
With the Sherlock Foundation.
Okay. Now, you said this is for the community?
Yeah.
So was National Light Out.
I've offered, I've offered this co-sponsor National Light Out for two years. They declined. That's their prerogative.
It's Driscoll's podcast for one of our...
She asked a question, Mike. You do not have a...
I don't think borough should be paying for this, I'm sorry.
I don't think it's monetary committee. I don't believe it's a monetary committee.
There's no line item this year for it? There has been in the past.
Is there?
There usually is. I'd like to know if there is, because that's our tax dollars. I don't intend it. I don't care for jazz, and I'm sure a lot of other people don't. So why should they be funding Jazz Festival for the foundation? I'm sorry, that's the way I feel about it.
I don't believe it's for...
Your prerogative. Another thing I see in here, I see Mr. White's here, and I haven't seen him again. I'm sure it's about the Montefiore property, and I would give you something positive with that. It would be nice to see something there, and something that will be bringing in tax dollars to the borough, which we greatly need. And there's two things on the bill list. First one is GL 1608, page 1. And it's about 2/3 going down the page. It's EC Pierce. LED light fixture, $2,022.7. Is that a streetlight?
Well, you know, it was, we had LED lighting put outside the police department, and also one in the field box.
So that was new light?
Yes, new light.
Okay, and on GL 1608, page 4. M&amp;R Electrical Contractors, repair our streetlight power surge, $900. That's one of the new streetlights, correct?
Yes, correct.
So there we stand, power surges?
No, they do not.
So every time I have a power surge, we're going to be putting out $900 for the light?
We're looking into it and see if we can be refunded by PICO due to the fact that it wasn't...
That would be a good idea, because they're supposed to last 30 years. My hope is we're told. All right, now, on just bigger, better things. Couple months ago, I was on the microphone, and I asked a question concerning all of the dump trucks going down South Pennsylvania Avenue because there was a major increase in dump trucks. And Mr. Short came out of the back room to answer my question. He said it's clean though, and that it was going to go into part of Bios Island. I don't know if you've got your information, because supervisor and the code enforcer in Boss Township said they are doing no projects of Bios Island. However, in paper, there is a notice of submission of Pennsylvania Department of Environmental Protection major permit modification application by Clear Earth of Southeast Pennsylvania LLC. They are located in the steel mill area. They receive contaminated soil. This is why these dump trucks are going down our street. And there must be hundreds of them a day going down South Pennsylvania Avenue. Sometimes they have the tarp on, sometimes they don't. When they're not, I'm sure it blows all over our apartments. I know for a fact that the chief, Chief McPhee, and Bobby Seward stood down on the corner of Philadelphia Avenue and South Pennsylvania Avenue for hour and a half one day, a couple months ago, and they counted over 60 trucks going southbound and hour and a half, and over 90 going northbound. Now, they're all heading to Route 1. Morrisville seems to be the shortcut to the steel mill project. They all know it. If they don't, then they might take the designated route that they're supposed to take. However, most of them don't, and it's going to be worse, because what they're asking for is a permit to increase their intake by 600 tons a day. Now, how much does a dump truck, a normal dump truck hold? Someone know? How about the ones that they bought? How many tons is it?
Eight tons.
Eight tons. So that's how many trucks? That's 600 tons a day? More coming down our streets?
Probably 10,000 or I would say probably 20,000.
Yep. And that's only counted for now here, so you can imagine how many are going down there and pay up. I don't care if the borough has to take ownership of South Pennsylvania Avenue between Philadelphia Avenue and Post Road. If we can do it, do it. Done it on Delaware Avenue, we've done it on Post or on Philadelphia Avenue. It's piece crap anyway. State doesn't do anything with it. You know how old the gas lines are down in Montefiore? They're 50 and 60, maybe 70 years old. There's leaks everywhere down in Montefiore. I don't think there's a day goes by that you can't see PICO there digging up the ground to put a new line in. I had it done in front of my house a few years ago. First, they took a vent hole under your car to let the gas out. And then, after a year of that, then they come in and they try to repair it. Every two inches they dug, the pipe was collapsing. They ended up putting a flexible hose into my house, because they couldn't put a new pipe in without digging up everything with steps, side walls, everything. The infrastructure's not needed with this amount of trucks. We're going to have a major, major problem there. It's going to be water lines next, not just gas lines. Something has to be done. We need to stop this. We need to find some way to get the trucks off our street, because it's ridiculous. Why don't they stay on the main highways? This is a residential area. The whole way down there is residential. There's nothing commercial there. It's all residential homes. People live right on South Pennsylvania Avenue. You know how many cancer cases we've had down below the railroad? Too many to count. One girl told me she counted over 50 other people that she knew, just below the railroad. I know I've had it. Several people I know have had it. One I care to count. Something has to be done with the cluster down there. So I just hope, I mean, all of you, something to be done. Call, talk to DE, the DEP, whoever you have to, and get something done. Your first word, word representative, so I will give you a copy of this. I didn't have enough to make it for everyone. I have one here. Do you want one?
I have a copy.
Okay. Would you want? Your first word representative, I appreciate you. If you can do anything, just next one. Thank you.
Thank you, Eileen. Next, we have Jane Berger.
Good evening. Jane Berger, 90 West Maple Avenue. Want to speak on two agenda items this evening, on the 10-day verse. It's been a long haul trying to get the proper development that I think is globally sighted. We've had a couple of false starts. The thing is working with redevelopment authority is that the interests of the borough's residents are protected for the independent sale, so you could know what's going in there. And as I said, until we get to that item in the agendas, and I do add your name and the dollar price, obviously, the generalities. But I really am surprised at the last sentence of the motion, and I'm kind of bummed out at why it has to read and is agreed to by the borough solicitor. Never seen that. It's understood that when you're working on any contract, or in this case, agreement of sale, that your solicitor would be an integral part of that. We go back and forth and make regulations. The council wants certain things in, or doesn't want certain things in. That shared. The solicitor works with the language, and then works with the attorneys, in this case, with the RDA. So that, and I hope my reading is wrong, that if the council wants to go forward, everything is fine, but the solicitor says, "Oh, no, no, you can't go through with the project." So I hope that somebody can clarify why that last phrase is there, because I take it as a given that Mr. McPhee or his associate will be working with this. You and that man, which was there, I have to say, Mr. McPhee, I was at the Tuesday agenda meeting when they voted for an executive session, and I did not see either you nor your public here that evening. So I think you missed the opportunity of some group discussions in writing the project that went in the back room. And kind of like, y'all young, who kind of works, who, we all work cooperatively, but I certainly hope that will not happen again. And I'm sure when you get to this, you can explain why the need to have that particular phrase. I just think it's a given because we agree with you. The other one is the first one, for the 14th annual Jazz Fest. I'm wearing a T-shirt. Arts in the Park. 14 years, we started Jazz Festival. We had a grant, Arts in the Park Resolution Committee, Establishment Committee. And I believe I spoke maybe a couple months ago, got that representation. I asked that maybe council take a look at it. I think it needs to be tweaked. When I think before the subcommittee, that could be duplicated, but I do like the name Arts and Events Committee, so it is, we pull the resolution up, we change that. You might want to add different numbers. You might want to take some off. But when you have a broader committee, that's not just the council, you certainly could have your council committee BLAs on or a member of that committee. You have a better chance for success when you bring more people into it. When we had this, we certainly had some grants, grants from, therefore, that was the same project, or like stigma. We look for sponsorships after that. I know the mayor's making use of sponsorship for other events. We do. There was something mentioned about the Jazz Fest, and after Mike Sherlock passed away, when Sherlock Foundation was formed, for several years, it was referred to as the Sherlock Jazz Festival. Because anybody who knew Mike Sherlock, like who was a self-taught jazz musician, can play with a mother's organization. That foundation, I'm not aware of the last thing they used to be, they've been able to hold any fundraisers to help fund this event. But they used to, used to have a comedy review. If I didn't go, I always sent a donation check to support the foundation to help fund that. The other reason I refer to that Resolution Committee that they need, so you can do more in this park, more in this panel, than just this one event. And I just say, I like jazz, but there are some people that may not, and you need to do more than just one event, and a broader committee that agrees with them, and go a long way towards doing that. The EDC was a member of that group, and the EDC is why I live in California, and I think they're getting more active again, because arts and events in the park and other events, you know, I'm sure Fred and the rest of members of council is an important part of getting involved to bring people into the town. So I saw a post today, somebody was wondering about the way the fees. One of the things borough government does to co-sponsor and encourage events is a mundane, unexciting fix. You can waive the pavilion fees. The pavilions are there, sitting empty, nobody's using them. We have an overall insurance policy that saves that additional cost. And I don't know if the borough has to get their own, but there was a couple years left for Borough Mind About Underwrite that particular thing. You know, although everybody's very neat in Broadway, and we have the trash cans, there's some cleanup, so you tend to not charge for cleanup for what it worth. These are, I'm sure there's some other things on the list that's already incorporated into the budget. There's things we do to co-sponsor, but we don't actually, in all cases, fund the event. Again, if you have a committee, you have several events, they would require each event to have a budget, and it was given to you on the council to look at, and you would approve the events, and you would know where the money was coming, where there might be asks, how much did you want to spend, and you will support something. So I'm sorry if it sounds like a history lesson, but there's a lot of history here. There's a lot of good things, and it's just kind of, you know, built to tell. The committee doesn't work. You have a committee of three. There's only one work. So if there's some pushback from some individuals, they get itself asserted because of who the organizer is of this particular event, I'm not surprised that it happens. But I think we can plan now to get in place for the next year and try to expand some of those things to go on. Some of you remember Andy Reddington, who's also a musician. Reddington's Irish. Unfortunately, the general facts are right. For several years, he had an Irish special in the hall and park as well. There are other things that they have in their park. The mayor is also a member of that, that particular committee as well. Defense Labor Network, he's also reporting that they have this, through this park, who's obviously sponsored by the borough. So, you know, maybe the next agenda meeting, we can pull that resolution, and start tweaking it, and making it up to date, and looking how you want to go forward. I'm sure there are many, you know, talent and knowledge or interested residents. Residents need your partners, not the understanding. You really aren't the enemy. You try to be helpful, and sometimes you're listening, sometimes you're not. But if you just looked at how Bristol works, and I don't mind you, I think that place I've been around, here you go. But, you know, they formed a nonprofit agency, and one reason, we could get to that point here, is there are funds out there that governments cannot apply or, but can be made available to private nonprofit organizations. And then you get a public partner partnership. They have an economic development corporation. Let's get behind our own EDC and give the support that it used to have. Thank you.
Thank you, Jane. Is the final word, 10 days? Is the final wording necessary?
Yeah.
At the council's approval, I'm just going to cauterize it, but be in the borough council.
If there's a big problem, I'll bring it here.
Next, we have Mike Yeager.
Good evening, everyone. Mike Yeager, 338 Loveport North. So several items I want to bring up. Some have already been addressed. I know it's not just me asking some of these questions, but I would ask that what I'd like to have happen is hear some of this addressed throughout the meeting. I'm really not looking for feedback as I'm speaking, though. The first, the first question that I have, and I know a lot of other people have, is when will the results of the audit be available? So I know, Bob, you've been asked this month in, month out. It's coming, it's coming, it's coming, but my RTK is waiting. Next, I pulled up the website for the borough, and I checked the registration, because I know we're looking to change the borough website, and I found something a little strange. And you guys might not even know, but the borough website is actually registered to combatants. So I'm not sure why that would be, or what it would take to get it out of his name, since he's no longer an employee and he hasn't been here for eight months, but it just doesn't seem right that he would be considered the owner of the Morrisville Borough website. So the other, the other piece to that would be, I know it's been talked about, but we haven't heard any feedback, as to when the new website would be available for people to view. Because part of that, when I look at the website and I look at borough code, it's about three years outdated. We haven't updated our electronic borough code in three years. So it's way overdue. If the answer is we're waiting to update the website, we haven't known about the update of the website in three years, so I'm not sure what we're waiting on to update it with. This is where a lot of people in the borough go to see what their rights and responsibilities are. And if it's not updated, we're not doing any new service. Next, and I mentioned it last month, and I know it came up in the, in the conversation at the agenda meeting, but Act 90, implementation of the legal properties and rental property inspections. Hopefully, we'll be able to get some update on this. It sounds like we have to, we have to do the 10-day notification and so forth. It sounded like it wasn't clear that we would be looking to implement in January. Not sure why it would take four or five months to implement something that'd be 10 days notice for, but if there's other ramp up involved, they would just let us know, and certainly, people would be patient, I'm sure. So another thing I wanted to bring up, and I know I've spoken to you about it a couple times, just to see if you'd be, the surety bond for the, for the borough manager position. So I did an RTK for the, for the surety bond, which is in our borough code that the borough manager should, needs to have, if it's part of our borough code. What I was provided was a copy of an insurance rider for theft, which is not a surety bond. It's not a surety bond that covers a financial professional from the state. So it's out there. It needs to be fixed. It's a requirement of the job we need to get surety bond. Also, within our borough code, when we, and it's not updated on the website, but I have a copy of it. When we updated the residency requirement, we also updated the way we were going to choose our surety bond, and that was supposed to go through the borough council. So Mr. Suvi has officially been the borough manager for eight months now, and we have not done what we need to do to protect the taxpayer by having a surety bond in this. So we need to move quickly to do that. If it's been done since we spoke, fantastic. If not, we need to move quickly. The next piece, and it was kind of brought up already with the contract that we have for the lighting. I know those two lights turn out not to be the case, but it's my understanding, and it was a couple of days ago, it might have been fixed by now, that there are some lights out on Bridge Street. I believe they are part of that seventeen year contract through JCI that we are supposedly supposed to get a benefit from at some point. I know Mayor Revell, the first time we spoke was in this room. I had mentioned a couple of times, the first time we spoke was in this room. And unsolicited, but in our conversation, you did mention that the people weren't understanding the lighting contract and that it wasn't a benefit to the borough. We're all hoping to see that sometime soon. Finally, I want to bring up an issue that was brought to my attention and Mr. Subey and I had some conversation with, but I don't think we went too far. So there was an issue with the line painting. Fine, so there was a mistake made and it was resolved. But in, in looking into what was done and people sending me personally information on how things were being done on the, on the road, Pennsylvania Avenue, State Road. We literally had employees out on State Road with no protective gear, with no reflective vests, literally with the machine and their, their street clothing doing this with a few cones. We've got to do better protecting our employees than that. This is a couple of blocks away from an area where I know Miss Cronin was concerned with having a bench foot in. A couple of blocks down the road, because we were worried about people rolling into the street in a conversation. Now we have borough employees that are standing out in the middle of the street with no protective gear, no signs, a couple of orange cones, doing street work. We've got to lead this town a little better than that and not put our employees in jeopardy. We've had enough lawsuits in this town to not want to set ourselves up for it. Thank you, guys.
Next we have Kurt Holtenrich.
Good evening, Kurt. Good evening, Kurt Holtenrich, three hundred, Loveport North. Might touch on it for the subjects, but first one about the events of the park. I agree or argue with Jane, we need more events. We need to entice people to want to bring your ideas out. Fill that park up more often than it is. I've been taking late night walks down the dyke. There's creeps happening down there that need to be controlled routinely on a set schedule. It, a lot of something. Kind of beetles and baggage probably down there to shut it. And people walking around down there, Pokemon people are out there, they keep a lot of the bad stuff like this, they don't like activity. It needs to be lighting along that dyke. I know it was a plan years ago for lighting. How in the heck can we not put lighting along the area that gets traveled by doggers who walk in early evening into the night, leave one at night, drive out? No one said, oh, it shouldn't be down, or do it when they're doing. Using the pavilion for their own affairs, so to speak. Dugouts, I've gone down there before in and out and there was stuff in the dugout that you don't want your little league kid going in there and seeing on the ground. It needs to be cleared up and it needs to be controlled actively along that button at night, every night. It's, it's, one thing we got to account as far as usable park space goes for everybody. And if people are afraid to be down there, this isn't a business space. As we came into the audit, I was like, I had to, we were told two months ago that you had an update on Wednesday. You can let us know without the update. I love to hear what's going on with that. The kids, we've had a lot of hours, seven and eight months. Are we paying more for how long it's taking? Because the original budget for that was fifteen thousand. So are we paying more now? Is it going, is it running anymore?
No.
No? Is there, is there, we get an update from, from you manager about what's going wrong with it? Is there, is there anything coming up or is it just?
No, it should be finished as well as finished. I think, I believe it is finished. So he hasn't been able to present it to me as a conflicting schedule at least.
Thank you. And I know Mike brought it, the lights on Bridge Street have been out for close to a month. It comes from there at night from Madi and it's pitch black down there.
I'm not sure you're addressing that.
It's been a month. No other place around here will have it downtown that dark all night. It's, it's, that's such little things that are unacceptable to be handled. It takes a month to get it dressed. If it's our downtown, it's in front of the ATM, on the cross the street, front of the bank, the light out in front of the ATM. So then across the street all the way down the beds, pitch black. Just a little more walk down, people want to be out now. Not the people you want up there. It's dark, something happened, you need to be proactive. You gotta stop waiting around for something to get bad and then address it. Go at things. Just like you mentioned, I'm walking around town. You see things differently than you do if you drive from town. Be critical. Notice where problems are, make the notes. Put a plan together for incremental improvements. Roadwork, sidewalk repairs. I know the sidewalks and curbs are homeowner responsibility. That has to be addressed at the time of sale, when it's transferred, that's got to be at that park. If you're selling the house, they got to fix the aprons and the sidewalks and curbs. Don't let it get transferred to the duodenum, same state that it's in. Thank you.
Sure. I'd just like to make a comment though about the lights. We were notified, I'd say about two weeks ago about the lighting. And we've tried the best we could to get them lights finished as soon as possible. However, in a perfect world, they should be done. However, through the process that we've been going through again, as Mr. Jaeger stated that, or now Mrs. Dry's box statement about the warranties on the lights and all, we have to go through a process to make sure that we're not paying for something that we shouldn't be paying for. However, we are addressing it and the lights, I can, it's on the impression that most of them are fixed. So I will definitely check on that tomorrow. However, sometimes things happen a little faster than we, a little slower than we thought.
We're not waiting at all. So then under six, we have the approval of the minutes. We were informed that the minutes we got were incomplete. I agree with that, so instead of voting on them, I do not vote on them. Or should we table them? Well, first, can we have a motion for the regular Borough Council meeting minutes on July eighteen, twenty sixteen?
Summers.
Running Ted had first and second to that. Any discussion on that?
Is that motion to remove them?
No, that's, that's putting them on the table. If you would like to remove them from the table now is when you would do that.
Oh, I can do the table.
I don't feel comfortable voting on minutes that I only have had them.
They usually just remove them because they're just going back to this one.
Well, now it's on the, on the agenda, so we're the one that brought it to our attention, so if you'd like to table it. Motion's made to table by Debbie Smith. With that, it's a second as well.
Thank you.
Bill? I didn't get to remember your name, sorry. So now we'll have a vote. All those who voted tabled in for the minutes, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? They're tabled until next month. And now we move on to reports, administrative management, seven A is the manager's report.
Yes, I'd just like to, besides presenting my report, I have some good news and some bad news. The bad news is that we applied last year for a PICO grant for speakers for Williamson Park, the night that grant wasn't due to any good reasons.
Thank you, thank you. This is, we're talking. No one at home can hear anything either. Do you go out, no sound, anyone at home? That's not fair for the people at home, see? They came to get out and they got to hear it. It's their right, got to hear this stuff.
Any reasons for anything that we did wrong, it was just the fact that they had to spread out the funding. As some residents have noticed, that the demolition for Williamson Park is completed. We will be cleaning up the property to hopefully in the future have another playground there. Hopefully one that is maintenance free. It will give us probably another month to actually get it leveled out and seen. At that time, we will move forward with trying to get additional playgrounds with it. And I also would like to thank Premier Escravating for donating their time for doing this demolition. It was at no cost to the borough. We planned originally to have the borough maintenance, public works do the work. Most likely would have taken two weeks to a month to accomplish. It's completely done. And I also would like to thank the people of Waste Management who donated the containers for the debris that had to be removed from there. On that note, when we were doing the demolition, we found a time capsule. So I was wondering if we could get a member of Borough Council to possibly have a night where residents could come out and officially open the time capsule where anybody had participated in that playground, could see what's in there. I have no idea, it's still sealed. However, I think you have to bring an axle with you because it is sealed tight. But we will help them have, but. I have it downstairs. Well, I was going to suggest that, but I don't know what's in it.
I imagine it's all. Yeah, well. I think it's official.
However, I think that people would like to have some additional time to talk about the things that went in there and, you know, there was people that were involved with that, that would like, like with the meeting, we have to keep moving on with the meeting this way. Get somebody who would like to do that, use a night to have memories, talk about memories, things like that. However, we could build it, the council would be, that's what council is for.
I think it's worthy of its own night. I don't think it needs to be one council person. I'm sure I'm not the only one at work on bringing that together. My first thought was to save it until we have a new playground down there, celebrate the new playground with the memories of the all. But I don't know how soon that is, so it might make more sense to have a night of our memories of Imagination Island up here sometime next morning. Just can be a special meeting and open the time capsule.
I'd like to have some of it here.
I think, I think we're all here. Yeah, we just need a special meeting, right? We don't need to meet it. So vote on anything, we could just show up, listen to public comment about what the memories of the park were. And then open the capsule up.
So I guess what we'll do is we'll set a date, put it on TV, we'll give everybody about three weeks to a month's notice and then set a date and then move forward with the.
I'm sure nobody knows their schedules right off the top of their head.
What? Any input, we'd appreciate it.
Is that it for the manager's report?
Next, thank you.
Next we have the solicitor's report.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. For you tonight, you have two things that are all sort on. One is the agreement with the redevelopment authority. And as Ms. Berger pointed out, I've been involved with motions for years and often it says to be approved by Borough Council and the borough solicitor and manager, but really it's no issue. Because if there was some issue with the agreement, I would bring it immediately to Mr. Subey's attention and let a hold on it. So I don't really think it matters one way or another, so I told Mr. Kerner, go ahead and remove that language. Don't really understand what the issue is. And also too, ten C, our office worked on the amendment to the agreement of sale related to our rider and look forward to working with the school district and council and moving that project forward. Obviously, we've been working with borough staff on responding to various voluminous right to know requests and various other things as a matter of course, but that's essentially what the solicitor's office has worked on in the past month.
Thank you.
Seven C is our engineer's report, but I do not believe they are present. Seven D is the mayor's report.
Thank you, Graham. Good evening, everyone. With the heat that we've been experiencing lately, I'd like to remind everyone, please remember to check the elderly, friends and family. Also, don't forget about your pets, they can eat meat in this heat either, so don't go outside for all of your park. I really don't get much louder, even when I stuff my teeth. I was able to, the mic is on by the way. I do apologize. I was able to go to the Pennsylvania State Mayor's Association, the annual conference, is held in July again. Many different topics were discussed. One topic was the use of local, or local law enforcement, using radar for speed enforcement. The association feels the, we are now closer than ever to getting a pass to the law. You may recall that I previously brought a resolution to the council to put this topic. There's currently two set bills that support the use of local law enforcement using radar. One bill has added language of the radar to the request of the state police. The mayor's association should deal with the state police having that added, they really believe that there's no one in opposition, so they feel it's a very good chance of that's right.